Madam Mayor, I can confirm we are now live.
Thank you very much indeed, Lee. Well, good evening, members, and a very warm welcome to all of you. I'm so sorry I've kept you waiting this evening. But before we start the meeting, I'm going to ask Lee if she would just run through the protocol so that we actually understand and know what's going to go on this evening. So over to you, Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members, and welcome to everyone who is joining us for Feryn Borough Council's first virtual council meeting. And as you can tell, unfortunately, we've been slightly delayed in the start of the meeting, and that's due to a technical difficulty with one of the webcams. But as I'm sure everybody is aware, the UK is still facing the COVID-19 pandemic, and here in Feryn, we are observing the rules of social distancing. As such, the council is holding its meetings virtually. The government included new rules on the holding of virtual meetings, which was confirmed when regulations set out in the Coronavirus Act 2020. If members of the public or press watching this online have any questions about the process, then please do contact the Democratic Services Department after the meeting. Rather than take a roll call of councillors present at the meeting, I can confirm that all members of the council are actually in attendance, and I have confirmed with all members that they are able to see and hear everything ongoing in the meeting. I'm currently displaying the list of all councillors who are currently in attendance, and that's just as a record for members of the public who are observing. I have explained to members that if they should drop out of the meeting, if their technology fails, then it will be deemed that they have actually left the chamber if we were in session, so they would not be able to vote or take part in the item being discussed at that time. Madam Mayor, I'd also like to explain the officers who are present at this meeting. I am Lee Usher, I'm the Head of Democratic Services. Also present at this meeting is the Chief Executive Officer, Peter Grimwood, and the Solicitor to the Council, Richard Ivory. I also have Samantha Whitman, the Committee Manager, who is here supporting me this evening. Members will be using the Raise Hands function of Microsoft Teams if they wish to speak. And as a reminder to members, it is helpful if you can keep your microphones turned off when you are not speaking. Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll pass back to you. You do need to turn your microphone back on, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Lee, I'm going to come back to you now and ask if we have any apologies this evening.
No apologies, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Lee. Members, next, we need to confirm as a correct record the minutes of the council meeting held on the 21st of February 2020. In a slight change to our usual procedure, we will accept these minutes as a correct unless any member wishes to raise any amendment. If you wish to raise an amendment, please indicate this via your Hands Up function. Members, I will take these minutes as agreed unless I see any hands up at all. Agreed? Thank you very much indeed, members. We now go on to Item Three, which is Mayor's Announcements. I'd just like to start the meeting this evening, first of all, with a great apology for keeping you all waiting, but also to welcome you to this inaugural virtual council meeting, especially as this is the first meeting of the council since the 21st of February, so it's quite a long time since we've all been together. We've all been living in unprecedented times over these past few months with the coronavirus pandemic affecting all of us, with our daily lives becoming very different, and with new and changed routines. For some in our borough, the effects of the pandemic have been particularly challenging, especially our most vulnerable residents, such as those with health conditions, and of course, our older residents. In this case, something as routinely simple as obtaining daily essentials has become extremely difficult. This is where the very best of our community spirit has shone through, and I have been extremely inspired and overwhelmed by the fantastic response of our local residents and our community volunteers. Executive Leader and I have sent out thank you letters to the amazing volunteers who have been working with our charity agencies, and we had delivered some thank you letters to the volunteers working for acts of kindness down at Jadis. I must say, I was absolutely delighted to see firsthand the tremendous efforts that they're all making to help others, the volunteers there are absolutely superb. You will have seen that we launched the Thank You Volunteer Scheme to enable residents to nominate people who have helped them. We are sending thank you letters to all those deserving residents. Although all mayoral events have been either postponed or cancelled, the mayors and I have kept busy, actually, during this time. We've been telephoning people across the borough who are isolated or living alone just to have a friendly chat, and this has gone down extremely well with many people. We've had some lovely conversations with a lot of residents who were isolating and had no one to talk to all day. One event that we did manage to undertake was of great significance to the local area as we celebrated the Armed Forces Day. The commanding officer, Captain Catherine Jordan from HMS Collingwood, and the leader joined us for a short ceremony at the civic offices back in June when we raised the Armed Forces flag. We also managed to draw the raffle for prizes donated for the Charity Ball back in March, which was unfortunately cancelled, with dig raised £1,700 on the raffle. And can I say to all of those who have supported, thank you very much indeed, it's very, very kind of you. Finally, and by no means least, I'm sure that all members will wish to join me in thanking our officers of this council, who have continued to provide excellent service throughout this difficult time. It is clear that the needs of our residents and business communities have been ably supported by our officers who have worked non-stop through the lockdown. I'm sure you all wish me to thank them all, and I'm hoping that I can do this personally as soon as government guidance allows to meet a little closer together. So finally, members, I would like to remind you that when you're not speaking, could you please turn your microphones off? It does help to sort things out for us easier. So thank you very much, good luck, members. We go on now to Item Four, which is Executive Leader's Announcements, and I'll ask councillor Woodward to grant you a break now. Thank you.
Thank you much indeed, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm obviously joining you in terms of recognising the fantastic response that we've had from our communities across Feryn during this really difficult period, and it was a pleasure to be able to join with you in a number of those initiatives which you talked about. The announcement I'm going to make this evening, Madam Mayor, relates to the Local Plan, and in line with government guidance on preparing local plans, we're continuing to develop our new plan alongside responding to the coronavirus pandemic. And this is particularly important work, given our lack of a five-year housing land supply and the need to be able to defend our borough from planning applications in areas that do not match our preferred development strategy. This is in contrast to many other planning authorities where work on their plans has halted during these times. This council is working hard to ensure that our local plan remains up to date and achieves only the development that we consider appropriate. Nonetheless, we are very aware of the impact of the pandemic and the impact it may have on our ability to run the next consultation in the same engaging manner that we've done with our previous three local plan consultations. Holding community action team meetings and public exhibitions where councillors and officers are able to hear the views of the public and respond to their questions has been valuable to date in shaping our vision for the new plan, but we have to respond to the current times where large public meetings are to be avoided and we must remain socially distant. For that reason, we consider it appropriate to review our local development scheme, which is the document that sets out our proposed timetable, to suggest that instead of a spring/summer consultation on the council's publication plan, as we did propose, we're now proposing an autumn consultation this year on the plan which we intend to then submit to government for its independent review. This short delay to the plan-making process allows us firstly to ensure that we have the methods, including virtual methods of consultation and necessary controls in place to avoid putting anyone at risk if they wish to take part in the consultation. But to be clear, it is our intention to hold the consultation physically if at all possible. By making the announcement now of a special executive in late September to consider the publication plan, I'm putting this revised timetable in the public domain to give residents and communities advance notice of the timing around this important next stage in the preparation of our new local plan. In relation to our neighbouring authorities and our obligation to work with them on cross-boundary issues such as unmet need, members may be interested to review the formal response from Portsmouth City Council, which has been received in relation to the consultation we ran earlier this year. And in their response, they have formally asked this council to take on 1,000 extra houses to help address their unmet need, and I've asked officers to make this response available as part of the minutes of this meeting. Our other neighbour with an unmet need, issue Gosport, has not yet formally asked us to help them out. They are behind us in their plan preparation, and this is something that we need to address whilst preparing our local plan. And it is perhaps also pertinent to mention that there will be a significant strategic countryside gap maintained between Stubbington and Feryn, plus the Meon Gap, on which discussions regarding designation as Green Belt continue via the Partnership for South Hampshire's Statement of Common Ground. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Woodward. Executive members, do any of you have announcements that you wish to make? Councillor Cartwright?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And likewise, I'd like to just give a thank you if I could. I would like to give my heartfelt thanks and gratitude to officers of environmental health and community safety, in particular Ian Richmond and Linda Baines and their teams who have worked there, carried out during this typical COVID-19 period. They've dealt with revising businesses and individuals under ever-changing rules from the government, have dealt with hundreds and quarters of open doors and bonfires, dealt with our problematic roughs spleen sequence, and been in partnership with the police on many issues. They've done this in an election by dealing with the smallest problems with understanding. In addition, I would also like to give my thanks on behalf of all councillors, to Duncan Exwell, who has worked extremely hard, giving us all up and running with much of our teams. And of course, likewise, my thanks to all directors and officers of the council for the fantastic work they've actually carried out. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Cartwright. Yes, I think we can all say, where would we be without Duncan at the moment? Can I now go to councillor Burket, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. About a year ago, work started on development of the five new council homes on land at 123 Bridge Road. Although there have been some delays, mainly due to weather and getting the utilities connected during the COVID-19 restrictions, I'm pleased to advise members that the properties, now named 1 to 5 Oak Tree Close, are now complete, with tenants lined up, ready to move in. The two larger houses are to be offered at social rent, and the three smaller houses at affordable rent. Along with the leader, councillors Martin and Bestable, and the Feryn Borough Council officers, we visited the completed site earlier this month. The houses were all completed to a high standard, including the landscaping, and perfect for the families waiting to move in. I would like to say thank you to all the officers and the whole team within Feryn Housing, as well as the building contractor, in what has been a very well-managed and delivered project, and I look forward to bringing more good news to the council as the coming months go by. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Burket. Councillor Bell?
Councillor Bell? Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Oh, thank you. I have two announcements to make. The first one is on our leisure centres. On the 9th of July, the government published guidance that will allow leisure centres to reopen from Saturday the 25th of July. Regarding Feryn's two leisure centres, Holly Hill and Feryn, I wish to make the following announcement. As has been widely reported, leisure centres across the country have lost a huge amount of money, and to date, the government has not announced any financial support packages specifically for them. The council will continue to work closely with everyone at the operator of both centres to agree when and how these centres can safely open, and the level of financial support that would be needed from the council to get the centres open again. I'm pleased to report that on Monday the 3rd of August, I will be taking a report outlining proposed way forward to the council executive for consideration. I would just like to give some information about local leisure centres. Gosport Leisure Centre, Havant Leisure Centre, Easty Leisure Centre, Southampton New Forest, Waterlooville, Tarot Leisure Centre, Petersfield, and Totten and Health Leisure Centre will not be opening on the 25th. Some are expected to open from the 3rd of August onwards, and the only ones that will be opening locally are Pure Gym and 24/7, and Anytime Fitness at Lockhead. Sports Direct Gym will not be opening as they have closed permanently. The other announcement I'd like to make is, obviously, we won't be having access to all areas this year, nor National Play Day, and nor will there be any play ranges, so I'm pleased to say that Y services will be active over the summer months. They will be delivering Y Health in Portchester and Feryn North West. In Titchfield, there'll be detached workers working over the summer, one night a week. And again, at Crofton, they will be doing online detached work. They'll be doing Zoom meetings via the Genesis Centre. And that's it, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Esther, thank you for all that clarification. Now, can I go on to councillor Martin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have two announcements this evening. The first one is related to climate change. Despite the lockdown, I'm pleased to confirm that the progress has continued on the carbon footprint calculation, which is being calculated in accordance with Majesty's Government Environmental Reporting Guidelines. The calculation is well underway, officers have been working hard during the lockdown despite the additional requirements that have been placed on them. However, due to the additional issues, there has been a small slippage in the timeframe, and so the calculation report will now be taken to the Executive Committee on the 12th of October. That report will of course go to the Policy and Resources Panel for pre-scrutining later on in September. To help minimise delays, we're going to be starting work on the Carbon Reduction Action Plan to try and catch up on some of the work that's lost. And finally, members will be aware that at the 2nd of March Executive, the principle of commissioning the greening campaigns agreed, however, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this project is being put on hold, and once it's safe for the community to come together, we'll continue with this commitment. The second announcement, Madam Mayor, relates to green waste. So the council's garden waste collection service was introduced in 2005. At the time, one free sack was provided, but up to three sacks were permitted per household. The additional sacks had significant impacts on the weight collected by the crew, and this prompted a review of health and safety related to the service, and a consultation with the HSE resulted in an improvement plan being developed for the service. In 2009, the number of sacks emptied through a charge was reduced to one per household, which reduced the physical impact on the collection crews. The maximum weight allowed to be lifted by the operatives is 20 kilograms per sack. During the recent COVID-19 lockdown, the green waste service was suspended by the council from the 18th of March to the 20th of April, due to the closure of the County Council composting facilities. Feryn recommends the service as soon as the sites were opened, in advance of a number of other local authorities, and there was a noticeable increase in the collection weights of the garden waste service. There was a high demand for garden waste sacks, and at the peak of the lockdown, the refuse and recycling teams were delivering over 250 new sacks to householders per week. The normal take-up of garden waste sacks is 40%, during the lockdown, this increased to 65%. Tonnes in excess of 170 tonnes per week were collected, and to put this figure into perspective, the tonnes collected at the same time in 2019 was purely limited to 96 tonnes. At this stage, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to pause and place on record my thanks to the Street Scene team for their hard work and commitment in the provision of the waste and recycling service. The team has worked long hours in difficult conditions, and they are one of our finest assets. The garden waste collection service puts a lot of physical strain on the loaders who are manually lifting the bags into the back of the collection vehicle. There have been 22 injuries incurred by operatives of Feryn Borough Council of this service since 2015, and this is not something which is acceptable to me and something that needs to be changed. The government's Environment Bill, which is expected to be introduced in 2023, will result in a move to consistency in collection arrangements across local authorities in England. Feryn Borough Council have been working with Hampshire as part of the project's integral partnership to consider these issues and the implications of these arrangements. It is likely that we'll need to reconsider the way in which we collect and dispose of our refuse and recycling materials of the future, and we will be starting this with the collection for garden waste. Therefore, Madam Mayor, commencing in 2021, we will be stopping the green waste sack system and will be introducing a new wheel bin service for the collection of green waste across the borough. This will reduce the physical strain on our loaders and provide an enhancement to the service. A full report will be submitted to the Executive in the autumn, and the initiative will be reviewed by the Street Scene scrutiny panel prior to consideration by the Executive. This service will be welcomed by residents as well as the waste operatives carrying out the service, and I'd look forward to reporting further on this initiative in the coming months. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Martin, thank you for all those. Right, members, we now go on to Item Six, which is declarations of interest. Members, you are reminded that you must declare any personal or pecuniary interest in accordance with the council's Code of Conduct and standing orders. And I can see, I was going to remind people that they had to put their hands up, but I can see that you're all coming along quite nicely, thank you, right. Councillor Price?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to declare a pecuniary interest in Item 13, and also in Item Eight, as I understand that Item Eight is a deputation relating to Item 13. The reason I'm declaring a pecuniary interest is that my house backs on to one of the sites. I feel that it's fairly right to also declare the interest and stay away from the meeting for the deputation as well as the actual item, because I understand that after the deputation, you're going to take the item straight after that. So as soon as we start, or you start on Item Eight Deputations, I will turn my computer off, and I understand that Lee is going to telephone me on my landline to tell me when you're finished with those two items, and then I will then be able to connect back on. So I apologise that you would have to wait around for a couple of minutes whilst we sign on. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Price. Yes, we have gone through that, and yes, I will make sure that she does give you a call. Councillor Miss Bell?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I wish to declare a non-pecuniary interest on Item 13. I sit on the parish wall trust with the church wardens, who are trustees of Churchland Trust, who have an interest in the Morant Drive planning application. It is actually an amendment to the declaration that has been recently published, and I'm clarifying the exact interest.
Thank you very much indeed, Miss Bell, thank you. Councillor Cartwright?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Same for me, Item 13, I'd like to declare a non-pecuniary interest in respect of this, as I predetermined the applications and the works outside previously. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Ford?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, similarly, non-pecuniary interest in Item 13. I predetermined just one of the Wazash applications, that's a sovereign presence. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ford. Councillor Woodward?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, same item, Item 13, the owner of the land which forms a planning application south of Frontley Road is known to me.
Thank you, councillor Woodward. Councillor Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like councillor Bell, I am also trustee at Portchester Community Centre.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Bastable?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to declare a non-pecuniary interest in Item 13 on the agenda, as I have a friend who lives adjacent to one of the planning applications.
Thank you, councillor Bastable. Are there any others that I want, wishing to declare an interest? And thank you, members. Right, those have all been noted. Councillor Bell?
Yes, yes.
Oh, councillor Walker? I think you're muted.
Madam Mayor, just before councillor Walker comes in, if I could be of some help for councillor Bell and councillor Walker, I'm sorry to say this, but if you could, when one of you was speaking, if the other one could whip your volume down, that would hopefully remove the echo.
Okay.
I've got on mute. Can anybody? Can you hear?
Councillor Walker?
Oh, good. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Same declaration, non-pecuniary interest in Item 13. I am chairman of trustees, Portchester Parish Wall, and Monet Drive land belongs or is in the control of two of our fellow trustees. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Walker. Right, is there any others wishing to speak? No? Fine. Can we now go on to the next item, being any petitions being received? Members, does anyone have any petitions to present virtually? No? Okay, let's find them. It's usual procedure, actually, for petitions of these items, but I would like to take the opportunity to update members in respect of existing petitions, and so I'm going to ask Lee Usher if she could please update members on some petitions. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first petition I'd like to update members on is a petition entitled 'Stop Building Houses on the Feryn-Gosport Strategic Gap'. This petition, which objected to the building of houses on the Gosport-Feryn-Stubbington strategic gap, was received on the 20th of June 2020. Of the 1,523 signatures, 462 were rejected as they could not be verified as belonging to people who lived, work, or study in the borough, according to our petition scheme, and that made the final number of signatures 1,061. The petition was referenced in the report to the Planning Committee when the planning application came forward for consideration on the 24th of June 2020. As the application was subject to an appeal at the Planning Inspector at due to nondetermination, members were no longer able to decide the application, and instead were asked to consider what their decision would have been in order to determine the council's case in respect of the forthcoming appeal. The decision of the committee was that, had members had the opportunity to determine the application, planning permission would have been refused. The second petition to update you with is entitled 'Feryn and Stubbington Residents Against the Development of the Strategic Gap'. This petition asks the council to stop the development of the strategic gap between Feryn and Stubbington. It is a live e-petition on the council's website with a closing date of the 31st of July 2020, and to date has 133 signatures of support. So, members, that will be updated to you once that petition closes, and that's the updates I have for you at the moment, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much indeed, Lee, thank you. We now turn to Item Eight on our agenda this evening, and that is Deputations. Lee, I'm going to ask, have we had any requests to make a deputation? And councillor Price, we'll see you a little later.
Yeah, that's just going to sound, just going to turn off and come out of the system completely.
Well, so councillor Price, so councillor Price, if I can confirm, if you just click on the hang-up button, which is the red bit at the end?
That's what I'm going to do.
That's fine, and then I will call you as soon as we're finished. And I can confirm, Madam Mayor, I'm just about to confirm, councillor Price has now left the meeting, thank you. So, Madam Mayor, we do have one deputation request which was submitted, and this is from a Mrs Pat Rook. Now, I do actually have a video recording of that deputation, so I'm now going to attempt to share that with everybody. Please wait one second while I get this, sorry, one second, sorry, Madam Mayor, I'm just going to pause whilst I share it. So what I'm going to do is I'll start the video off, and then I will share my screen. Hopefully, here we go. Sorry, Madam Mayor, I'm just making sure I've got the right element here. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Pat Walker. I was at the council meeting on Thursday 5th December 2019, along with another member of our group in seven habitats in Portchester. We strongly agree with the motion put forward by councillor Forrest that the council resolves to remove paragraph 2.17 from its scheme of delegation to officers, delegation to the head of development management. We disagreed with the decision at the time, and now that six months has elapsed, we're able to challenge it. We feel that to delegate the decision-making to one officer turns a democratic process into an autocratic one. Like most, but not all local authorities, Feryn Borough Council has adopted a deputation scheme for all its committee meetings, which form the council's committee structure. This gives those living, working, or studying in Feryn the opportunity to speak on topics which fall within the council's powers and functions. The scheme is well-used, respected, and appreciated. This decision last December will result in the residents of Feryn losing that opportunity to address members and officers with deputations concerning certain planning applications. We feel this is unnecessary, unjust, and undermines the relationship between the council and residents. A significant amount of time, between 18 months and three years, has passed since these applications were made and considered by a planning committee. In that time, there have been changes in advice, including directives from Natural England, which has seen the need for nitrate mitigation. Schemes for nitrate mitigation will now form a particularly important part of planning applications in our area. Mitigation against the impact of development on the EU sites is both topical and of vital importance in adhering to the Habitat's directive. Each case is complex and different in its approach to mitigating against the increased nitrate created by the development. Such important issues require a decision by committee, as the effectiveness of these schemes will continue to impact our locality for our lifetimes and beyond. New documents concerning these sites have been added online to these cases in that time. Some of these contain information about changes which our group feel need to be highlighted to a planning committee and discussed. The site at 79 Greenaway Lane, Wazash, was returned to committee. In terms of consistency, all applications which present material changes, such as an appropriate assessment, should also be turned to committee. Some of these sites have changed dramatically since they were given a resolution for planning permission from 18 months to three years ago. Taking the example of one that has had the shortest amount of time since resolution to grant permission, Seafill Road, P180654 FP, this site was caucused and has regenerated. There have been huge changes. It has more wildlife on it now, including some displays from other sites in Portchester. The surveyor who undertook the recent update ecological appraisal said that the site was so overgrown and wild now, he could not access it any longer to undertake a full check of what is there. Even with limited access, it was discovered that there was a new battriceet, higher level of back foraging, and more red-listed birds. We maintain that this deserves proper study and discussion by a committee. The alternative is that the delegated officer would make a decision using a review which contains errors and is based on a document which, according to Sireen's guidance, is now after three years unlikely to be valid. A barrister engaged by members of the public advises, when assessing the implications of a proposal, the competent authority is entitled to take mitigation into account when undertaken an appropriate assessment. But the benefits of any mitigation which is relied upon must also be established with certainty at the point when the appropriate assessment is being undertaken, just as the European Court of Justice explains. There is evidence that some applications recently approved, and at least one of which has been approved by a delegated officer, have not met this requirement set out in recent case law. We are very concerned, therefore, that if these powers remain, applications will be waded through speed and convenience, and not for the long-term good of our local environment and the future of our borough. We urge the members to support the motion to remove paragraph 2.17 from a scheme of delegation to officers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So that is the deputation that we received from Mrs Rook. And I will now pass it over to you, sorry, I will pass it over to councillor Forrest. So?
Thank you, Lee. Members, as this deputation relates to the motion we have just had before us, I will I will bring the item forward on the agenda, and we will deal with the motion now from councillor Forrest as set out on page three of your agenda packs. Lee, can I come back to you now and ask you to take us through this one, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members, as you will be aware, when we're in the chamber, we often run our debates. So we're going to try and do exactly the same, although you are online, obviously. I have in my hand my phone, which I'm going to use as a timer. Unfortunately, I can't display that, but I will give you a verbal nudge if you approach your five minutes. So just for the benefit of members of the public, each member is entitled to speak for up to five minutes. We will invite, however, councillor Forrest to present his motion in the first instance. And then, once it has been seconded, the seconder can speak immediately or hold till the end of the debate. Once everybody has spoken, then it comes back to councillor Forrest as the move of the motion to reply. And at the end of the debate, Madam Mayor, we will take a roll call vote. So that means I will ask each member in turn to confirm whether they wish to vote in favour, against or abstain from the vote. So thank you, Madam Mayor. So it's now over to councillor Forrest to present his motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, councillor Forrest, thank you.
Okay. My incoming sound has been very poor, so I'll speak slowly. And I try to ensure that my voice isn't quite as much. The motion refers to, it was made to the constitution in December of last year, specifically gave to the head of development management authority to determine planning applications, which have already been considered by the planning committee and permission granted under certain conditions. It referred to following due consideration of any further material planning considerations. Now, the further material planning considerations referred to was principally at the time a response to the uncertainty of the effects of Natural England's rulings on mitigation of the effects of nitrates. It is becoming increasingly clear that this isn't just a minor technical issue, and that profound and lasting changes are likely to be to the development. Elected members will be held accountable to these and should therefore have a chance to reassess schemes approved during the period of uncertainty. Just because I was coming forward, there are solutions as to how the nitrates issue can be dealt with. And it's important that members should be able to judge individual developers' approaches right. Besides the nitrates problem, the planning committee approved the individuals over a period of twelve months ago. As a deputy told us a month ago, environmental situations will have changed considerably on some of these sites, and therefore new environmental studies will have to carry out. And as the planning committee approved the plans so long ago, there is a substantial changes. These will be seen as having member approval, even though members might not have approved them if all the information had been available to them at the time. And as a third point of risk, there will be no further opportunity for groups like ours who have some experience and expertise in these fields to examine the changes that are proposed in mitigation, will therefore not just be setting aside the expertise of our elected members, but of our very, very concerned and active public. And let's remember that all the sites in question were contentious. There was a number of resident objections and deputations in committees. Residents who spoke have come back to officers if they are making the final sign of. Whereas if they're unhappy with members, they can express that at the ballot box. And every confidence in the judgment and integrity of our officers. But given the passions raised by major planning issues, there is the risk that some residents may feel, however unjustly, that they're being put away for sidelined. The election aims to remove that risk from our officers and put ultimate responsibility where it belongs, as the elected members.
Thank you, councillor Forrest. Do you have a second after your motion? Is the motion seconded?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I second it. councillor Trot.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Mrs Trot. Lee, would you like me to come back to you now if we're going to go into debate? I believe councillor Walker would like to speak. councillor Walker? Sorry, we can't hear you, councillor Walker. I think you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
We can indeed, loud and clear.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members should recall that we have already debated a similar motion back in December, 2019, when full council were considering a review of the constitution. I note that councillor Forrest was not present at that meeting, so I will again confirm my statement I made at that meeting. The change of delegation only referred to twelve planning applications. The twelve that had been given planning permission by the planning committee but fell between the issuing of formal permission and the European directive for nitrate concerns. Therefore, they were only awaiting a nitrate solution. Some of the applications had already come before the planning committee on more than one occasion for consideration. From reading the minutes of the full council from December, 2019, you will see that an amendment was proposed by councillor Woodwood, seconded by councillor Cartwright, which stated that the paragraph be amended to specify that once the twelve planning applications had been dealt with, the delegation in the constitution was to be removed. This was agreed unanimously by full council on fifth December, 2019. As advised by Lee Usher today in her email, since that time, of the twelve applications, one has been withdrawn, and those that have achieved nitrate solutions, one has been given planning permission by the planning committee, one has been given planning permission by delegation, and one will be coming to a future planning committee, which I believe will be in August. I will again assure members that if any of the remaining eight applications were to require onsite nitrate mitigation, which would materially alter the planning application, then in consultation between myself and the head of development control, that application will be brought back to the planning committee for further consideration. However, if the solution to any of these applications involves obtaining off-site nitrate credits, they will not be required to come back to committee. All sites will be subject to an appropriate assessment and confirmed by Natural England. I therefore cannot support this notice of motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Walker. councillor Trot, did you wish to speak now or would you like to speak later?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will speak later.
Thank you very much indeed. councillor Cartwright?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm somewhat surprised at this motion, to be perfectly honest, in that, you know, given what councillor Walker has just said about what happened at the December meeting, it's a motion that I actually seconded. And it was very clear that we were already talking about those twelve, as it was then, those twelve applications. And if I then look at most of the applications we're talking about, most of them are Worsash, most of which have been back to the planning committee on three occasions already. So they've all got outline planning permission. So, you know, I mean, everybody's had their opportunity to say what they think about it with regards to application. Now, but when it comes to the nitrates issue, and that's all the hold on the outline planning permission was, then the developers arrange this via, you know, we'll get the permissions via Natural England, Natural England then come back to the officer, and then give permission. Now, my view is, what on earth is the point of bringing it back to the planning committee when all we're really interested in to Natural England agree with it or not? So, you know, it's a bit of a nonsense to say, Louise, it's a shame that perhaps the person who put the motion didn't actually look at the minutes of the fifth of December, because it was very clear we were purely talking about those twelve at the time. So my view is, you know, complete waste of time. I certainly cannot support this motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Cartwright. councillor Peter Davies?
I've done it, yes.
Well done.
I thought you'd support this motion for a very different reason. I've often argued, as I might believe, about the nature of the Feryham Borough constitution. Essentially, constitutions are about setting a framework, they're not about issues that may be ephemeral from day to day. And it seemed to me that the paragraph 2.17 was actually a specific, in a sense, ephemeral issue, and not part of the overall constitution of Feryham Borough Council. In my view, the comments that have been made, it should have been a resolution by the planning committee, if they wanted to, for those particular items. It shouldn't have been added to the overall constitutional scheme of delegations. It's not a lasting issue. And the only way to ensure it's not a lasting issue is to make sure it's not in there in its first place. So I would urge all members who care about the constitution of Feryham Borough Council and dealing with specific framework issues to actually remove paragraph 2.17 and allow the planning committee in future, if it wishes, to put forward a resolution which would have exactly the same effect as councillor Cartwright and councillor Walker want, I agree with both of us, I say. But it shouldn't be in the constitution. Do you know, members, I don't want to lecture on the constitution for now. Well, I could if you like. But do you know, members, the American constitution, for that huge country of 300 million people, is twenty pages. The Feryham Borough Council constitution, which is a very much smaller area, is a whole ring file of things. And this is not a constitutional matter. 2.17, which has never been put in there, is should have been a resolution by the planning committee. And I would have supported the resolution by the planning committee. I can't support the amendment to the constitution. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Davies. I've got now councillor Burkitt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the very reasons that councillor Walker and councillor Cartwright have put their views across, this was debated in December of last year, 2019, and there was plenty of debate about it. And as for the voting, it was unanimous to support the amendments to the motion at that time. So I honestly do not understand why we're bringing it back to council. A motion that's already been debated, and it clearly is only for those twelve, of which now we are only waiting on eight. And if there was anything else to come back, those material differences within the planning details, it would, as councillor Walker has indicated, then be referred back to the planning committee. So I cannot support the motion as it's set out at the minute. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Burkitt. councillor Cunningham? councillor Cunningham?
Can you hear me?
Can indeed, yes, we can.
Thank you. Can I disagree with some of the previous members who's just spoken? It's not just about nitrates. Nitrate is an important issue, as we are all aware. But it's also, some of these sites, it's about ecology. And I don't want to refer to any particular site, but some of those sites have changed substantially over the last eighteen months in to a degree where new ecology reports have been issued and comments made by Hampshire Ecology Services. Now, residents have, I believe, have a right to look at those reports and challenge them and to put their views to members, not to write into an officer, but actually put their views directly to the members. That's what we're here to do, is to listen. And most importantly, I think, we're all aware, in this borough at the moment, there is huge frustration over development. We shouldn't be seen, I don't think, anyway, to try and shortchange the residents in having the time and space to put their views. Development is again, you know, developers have a huge challenge of when they actually debate development in the first place. So I don't believe that we should remove any possibility of the residents putting or having the time and space to put their views to elected members. That's what we're here for. Now, I, there are some cases where delegated powers make sense. I support it. But in this case, I don't, because I believe, or take the view, that all we're doing is creating more frustration with residents who simply see the process as a complete waste of time in their period points. But most critically, I would say, is that there's one particular site that has changed out of all recognition over the last eighteen months. The ecology report that's been put in is a tragedy, quite frankly. It's complete nonsense. And I believe, in that case, residents should have the time and space to be able to challenge that report and push their views and comments and opinions to the elected members. That's what we're here for, to listen to what they have to say. And as I say, it's not about just nitrates. It is about other issues like ecology. Thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor Cunningham. councillor Miss Bell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've moved away, so hopefully the echo has disappeared now. I can support this motion. I remember back in December, we spent considerable time discussing a very similar motion, and the council agreed a way forward with regard to the amendment. All councils agree that. We can't sit here and try and determine individual planning applications. We are looking at the constitution that we are trying to agree. If we hadn't had the nitrate issue, those planning applications would have been issued, and one would have expected development to have started. But because the nitrate issue happened at the time of the permission, they have been delayed while a nitrate solution is found, and we're hoping that that's going to be the case. I think we should take comfort from the fact that, as has happened and will happen, if the nitrate solution means that that application will have a material change, that application will come back to the planning committee for consideration, and has happened already and is going to happen in the future with two applications. So I take comfort from the fact that that is a progress that we're already going down and we're already using. So I can't support the motion this evening.
Thank you, Miss Bell. councillor Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Having listened to the deputation, the point that was being made was that the ecology of the area and the discussion, that was initially almost wiped out before planning consent was even considered. And now it has grown back, it is overgrown, it has got wildlife in there. It's in my world here. It's probably slow worms, bats, there's a new badger set there. And this planning application would be approved if we allow it to go forward. So I can, I support this motion so that these residents have the right to come back to the council and give a deputation. So in favour of this, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. councillor Keeble?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've listened to all what's said, and certainly on the fifth of December, I listened to all what was said and the motions put forward, and agreed that, in fact, that these should go ahead if the nitrate system was cleared. But in the last eight months, there's been an awful lot of controversy about the ecology of these places and the nitrate situation. And I honestly feel that maybe some of us would actually probably change our minds. And so therefore I am going to support the motion, because I think that's what the planning committee is all about, and for our residents to come along and just have a look at the latest evidence. If there's not much to say, it'll be put through in about five minutes on the planning committee. But if there's things to be dealt with, we need to drill down and make sure that we're doing our job, and that's what we're elected for. So I am going to support the motion.
Thank you, councillor Keeble. Are there any other members wishing to speak? Could you raise your hand, please? Yes, I'll come to you in a minute. This is councillor Evans.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we're confusing a number of matters here. The basic notion of motion relates to whether or not we should allow officers to accept a natural England statement that a particular planning application did have appropriate nitrate mitigation or not. And that was restricted to specifically eleven named applications, which would have been through the planning committee and all the relevant elements. And it seems to me that it is totally appropriate, in those circumstances, that officers can accept a statement of natural England, a supporting statement in terms of the nitrate mitigation proposal. In terms of whether or not a site has changed or not, and that's an interesting one, because we can get planning approval, and the site may not be touched for three years. And I think this is inevitable with many of those sites. The environmental considerations will change over that period of time. I'm not sure whether the fact that the developer hasn't started digging would give us grounds within that three-year period to go back and say, we are rescinding your planning application. But I think it's a very mixed bucket being put in front of us tonight for different reasons. In terms of the basic motion, then, I do not accept the motion at all. I think we should concede with the agreement we had earlier in the year. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Evans. councillor Mrs Trot?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, members, for your contributions. Well, obviously, as I'm seconding this motion, I do agree with the motion, and I agree with it for the following reasons. As was stated on a number of occasions, it is now seven months since this was decided on December the fifth last year. Things have changed a lot since then. We have had some information about nitrate mitigation, and we have had a very interesting delegation from Mrs Rook, and I thank her for that. And I agree with her. Things have changed a lot over the sometimes eighteen months. And I would say that I agree with councillor Davies, although he's much more erudite than me, and I would suggest many members of the council that this is an ephemeral issue, and it is not a lasting issue. And he has urged all members who care about the constitution to support the motion. I think we all care about the constitution, so I think that's a very good reason to support it. And councillor Cunningham has said that, as agreed by, as said by Mrs Rook, that it's not just about nitrates, although if it's mainly about the Worsash ones, it would appear to. It's about ecology. It's about the possibility of residents having a chance to point out that there should be further investigations. And councillor Mrs Bell has said, Miss Bell, sorry, I do beg your pardon, if we hadn't had the nitrates issues, these applications would have been approved. Yes, but they haven't been yet. And I think I urge all members to support this motion, because these sort of things should come back to the planning committee so people can have their chance to make their views known. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Trot. I see now councillor Engelfield would like to speak. councillor Engelfield? Would you like to unmute?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Good evening, can you hear me? Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, councillor Engelfield, go ahead.
Oh lovely, thank you, thank you, madam mayor. No, I will support this, I don't think it would come as any surprise to any of the councillors that I will. Anything to give the public a better understanding and a choice to what they believe in, to come along and have their say, I will support. I think that's what democracy is all about. I do certainly believe with councillor Cunningham and councillor Kelly, who made their points very clear, and councillor Davis, who treated Trot and others that really care about environmental issues. I'm not surprised by any means the imagination to how this is developing, save the pun. But I am very upset to hear that wildlife is in danger. It's unlawful and under the countryside wildlife act, so either kill, edge or mane a wildlife animal knowingly or not knowingly. Ignorance isn't a form of defence, and rightly so. I don't believe in delegated powers. I've had a very, very unsavable incident with a lovely old oak tree in my own ward that's been cut down. I think it's just the delegated powers. The more chances that people from the community have to come along and represent their wishes on their community. And I believe too, to say that it's only twelve is in itself shameful, because for only twelve, it's still twelve applications that can be decided wrongly. And I think that to get everyone right is the most important thing. So I congratulate councillor Jim Forrest for putting this forward and I will support it, you know, fully. Thank you very, very much for letting me have on stage. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Engelfield. Councillor Woodward?
Yeah, thank you very much indeed, madam mayor, for bringing me in to speak. First of all, I'd say I agree with councillor Engelfield on what he's said about wildlife matters. And none of those have affected any planning permissions which are granted. All of the acts and regulations and everything else that I know he's referring to and cares passionately about, all of those are relevant and they will be enforced by this council on sites which have planning permission, which has been issued. And the sites to which the deputy was referring, of course, is a site where planning permission has not been issued and that's the whole problem. The, and Mrs Trot was talking about these applications not having been approved, they have been approved. Every single one of them has been approved by the planning committee, on some occasions three times. And the real issue is when these planning permissions are issued. And I think a number of people perhaps don't understand that a resolution to grant by the planning committee isn't the same as the piece of paper being handed over to the builder, which actually says planning permission. So I think it's important to realise that distinction. And the fact is, these matters have been before the planning committee on sometimes on three occasions with deputations, with everybody having their say. And those, therefore the local planning authority has resolved the grant. And what we're left with is the technical issue of mitigation of nitrates, rewind a couple of, three years, such a thing didn't even exist. It now does, it's very little different from a building regulation matter, which does not become before this council. So I think that this motion should be defeated. And I would probably caution as well, the comment that councillor Keeble made earlier, saying, yes, we will have changed our minds and we'll make a different decision. He would appear to have predetermined the fact that he, that who by the end of this meeting will become a member of the planning committee, has already made his mind up. And I don't think that's a very healthy matter at all. So madam mayor, I hope that members will reject this notice of motion and these planning applications will then be permitted if the nitrates work. And if something changes, we'll go back to the planning committee. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Woodward. Are there any other members wishing to speak before I bring the proposer in again? Councillor Forrest, would you like to come back now?
Thank you, madam mayor. As has been mentioned, I didn't depart in the debate on the fifth of December. I didn't intend to. At Queen Elizabeth Hospital, it was last gone the second of December. I got on a plane so that I could attend that meeting. On the fourth of December, I was called back to Queen Elizabeth Hospital, who were all of us seriously ill. Arrived too late to have a good outcome. So I was otherwise engaged on the fifth of December and I'm pretty sure I gave my apologies for meeting at the time. If I had been able to take part in that today, I would have said much the same things as I've said, said, said today. And I would have based my, I mean, very substantially on the issue that councillor Davis raised. History is littered with emergency provisions and emergency legislation, which affects long after the original emergency has disappeared. And, well, I appreciate councillor Walker's comments about some consultation between him and the planning officers, if it's not necessary in particular instances. It still leaves us with this very blunt issue, this very blunt instrument on our constitution. And I think that is something we need to remove. I understand the short-term things, thinking behind it for a lot of reasons, but excluding members and the public from decisions that apply to them about matters which are constantly changing. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Forrest, thank you. I'm so sorry to hear of your bereavement. And if it's not too late, can I send my sincere condolences to you? I'm now going to hand over to Lee Usher, who will take a vote. Lee?
Thank you, madam mayor. Members, so as I mentioned before, we'll do this vote by roll call, which means that I will call out each of your names in turn. As you know, members, I do usually try to rattle through this quite quickly, but just for the sake of clarity for those watching, I will take this at a steady pace. If you could therefore be ready on your mic button to turn it on and off when you have spoken, that would be most helpful. So members, the vote now is on the motion that this council resolves to remove paragraph two point one seven from its scheme of delegation to officers. So members, would you please vote either for, against or abstain? Councillor Barton?
For.
Councillor Bastable?
Against.
Councillor Mrs Bayford?
Against.
Councillor Miss Bell?
Against.
Councillor Burkitt?
Against.
Councillor Butts?
Against.
Councillor Cartwright?
Against.
Councillor Mrs Clubley?
Against.
Councillor Cunningham?
For.
Councillor Peter Davis?
For.
Councillor Tom Davis?
Against.
Councillor Dugan?
Against.
Councillor Mrs Ellis?
Against.
Councillor Engelfield?
For.
Councillor Evans?
For.
Sorry, councillor Evans, just to confirm, that was against, wasn't it?
Against, yes.
Thank you. Councillor Zachary?
Against.
Councillor Ford?
Against.
Councillor Forrest?
For.
Councillor Miss Harper?
Against.
Councillor Mrs Henigan? Councillor Mrs Henigan, if you can hear me, you need to switch your microphone on, please. Madam mayor, if you're happy, I will come back and see if Mrs Henigan, councillor Mrs Henigan can confirm that at the end.
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Councillor Mrs Hockley?
Against.
Councillor Keeble?
For.
Councillor Kelly?
For.
Councillor Mrs Mandrie?
Against.
I will just take that as one against. Councillor Martin?
Against.
Councillor Mrs Pankhurst?
Against.
Councillor Price? I'm sorry, madam mayor, I just hit the mute all button just to stop that bit of feedback there. Oh, councillor Price has removed himself, I'm so sorry. Councillor Mrs Trot?
For, sorry for the delay.
Thank you. Councillor Walker?
Against.
Against.
Thank you. Again, I shall ignore the echo, that's one against. And councillor Woodward?
Against.
Thank you. Madam mayor, I'm just going to go back and check if councillor Mrs Henigan can hear me. Councillor Mrs Henigan, are you there?
Would you like to count up, Lee? She's not coming through.
It's, she's showing us connected, but I can't hear from her at all. So madam mayor, I will assume that is, I'm going to take that as an abstention because we can't confirm from her.
Yes, okay.
So madam mayor, that is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight members voting for with one abstention. Twenty members voting against, so that motion is defeated, madam mayor.
Thank you very much indeed, Lee, and thank you, members, for that. We will now go on, back on to the agenda for item nine, members, and that is the minutes of the executive. Councillor Woodward, would you please present the minutes of the executive, the schedule of member and officer decisions and any urgency positions, please?
Yes, thank you very much, madam mayor. I'm happy to lay before the council the minutes of the executive meetings from Monday the second of March and Monday the sixth of July. Also the schedule of individual executive member and officer delegated decisions and the schedule of decisions that were taken under the urgency provisions. I'm happy to take questions on them.
Thank you, councillor Woodward. May I have a second, please?
Seconded, madam mayor.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Cartwright. Members, would you put your hands up if you wish to speak at all? Councillor Davies?
Thank you, madam mayor. Sixth of July, are we on?
I'm sure we can be.
Yeah, sixth of July.
What page are you on?
Item three, page thirty-six.
Thank you.
Can I, through you, madam mayor, can I thank the executive leader for, I know, the enormous amount of commitment he has shown. And would he accept that we've been very lucky to have someone as committed as him to be our leader in this very difficult time? I'd like to give my thanks, and I'm sure we all would agree. And can I also, on page thirty-eight, echo his support of our council employees? As members will know, I've always worked in the public sector myself. And sometimes, you know, the public sector doesn't get all the thanks it deserves. Councillor Woodward has given our thanks and I do appreciate this excellent report. Thank you, councillor Woodward.
Thank you, councillor Davies. I think that was extremely kind. We do often forget our leader, who does such a fantastic job. So thank you for those kind words. Can I go to councillor Burkitt now, please?
Thank you, madam mayor. It's just a point of order, has councillor Price been invited back?
Thank you so much, councillor Burkitt. No, he hasn't. Can we pause there, madam mayor? Do you know, I wrote three notes here to call him back and I have reneged on that agreement. Do bear with me for one moment, madam mayor.
Hello, Lee, I'm not in, I think, okay now. So I'll put the phone down.
Thank you, madam. Thank you, madam mayor, sorry about that. I just filled in with councillor Price on where we're up to. He does in a moment wish to speak on one of the executive items, thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you very much indeed, thank you. Councillor Price, are you back in with us now?
Yes, I am, I'm with you.
And you would like to speak on the executive minutes?
Yes, I'm not sure which one, which one you've got to.
Well, if you tell us where you want to go.
Right. It's not the March one, it is the one of the sixth of July.
Okay.
Could you give us a page number, councillor Price?
Yeah, sorry, it's page thirty-eight. It's actually item three, which goes over two and a half pages, two and a quarter pages.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, of course.
Thank you, madam mayor. Sorry about that. I just wanted to say, on the last paragraph on page thirty-eight, is that my group would want to be associated with the, what the leader has said there about the chief executive officer and all of the staff, that what they have done during this Covid nineteen. And to say that we fully support all of the work that they have done, the staff have been absolutely tremendous, far better in my opinion than some councils. And also to say that we fully agree and support the extra two days holiday for the staff, because I think they very well, very much deserve it. It's been, I think, tremendous pressure for them to be at home working rather than working in the office and the comradeship, which they have when they're there. So it's been a very difficult time for them and we can't thank them enough for what they've done. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Price. I think those comments are echoed by all members, but thank you for bringing them to my attention. Members, are there any other members? Councillor Keeble, you want to speak? Councillor Keeble?
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. Just, all the independent councillors probably support all the work that the officers have done during this whole period of time. And I've had a phone call from councillor Henigan to say that her screen completely froze during the voting and she tried to get back and she rang back to me and said, look, I wanted a vote, but I couldn't.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Keeble, thank you for that information. Lee has obviously taken note of that. Members, are there, is there anyone else who wants to speak on the executive minutes? Therefore, I will take these minutes as agreed. We now go on to item ten of the agenda, and that's reports of other committees. Councillor Walker, would you please present the minutes of the planning committee?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd just to present four sets of minutes for the members to look at. Please give it to our prepared room, for which I require a second. I've given the vice chairman, who is unfortunately unable to be there. So I don't know if we can take that one first and second it.
Yes, by all means. Could I have a second, a second, please?
Yes, madam mayor, councillor Cartwright, happy to second.
Thank you very much indeed, madam. Thank you, councillor Walker, that one's done, right?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'll follow on with Wednesday, the eighteenth of March, Wednesday, the thirteenth of May, and Wednesday, the twenty-fourth of June, twenty twenty. And I expect that all four sets are noted.
Thank you, councillor Walker. Are there any members wishing to speak? I don't see any hands up at the moment. I'll give you sufficient time.
You might need a second, madam mayor, for those.
I do indeed, thank you very much, councillor Woodward. A second for the minutes would be?
I second it, madam mayor.
Thank you very, thank you very much indeed, councillor Bastable. Sorry not to come back to you earlier. Right, members, any, anyone wanting to speak? In that case, members, I will take these minutes as agreed. Item eleven on the agenda are the minutes of the scrutiny panels. Councillor Mrs Hockley, would you please present the minutes of the leisure and community scrutiny panel?
Thank you, madam mayor. It's my pleasure to present the minutes of the leisure and community scrutiny panel held a long time ago, twenty fifth of February. Now the world has changed since then, twenty fifth of February, and also they'll be received. I'd be proud to ask any question.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Seconded, madam mayor.
Oh, thank you, councillor Mrs Clubley. Members, does anyone want to speak? In that case, members, I will take these minutes as agreed. Councillor Mrs Bayford? Councillor Mrs Bayford, would you please present the minutes of the policy and resources scrutiny panel?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'm pleased to present the minutes of the policy and resources scrutiny panel held on Tuesday, the third of March, and after they be received.
And are those seconded?
Yes, seconded, madam mayor.
Thank you. Members, is there anyone wishing to speak? Councillor Peter Davis?
Thank you. I was a bit concerned, madam mayor, through you, to the chairman, that the meeting lasted an hour and a quarter. And in it, there were three meeting items. The commercial property portfolio, the climate change, the revenue and the budget, basically. And I was concerned that that was all missed through in an hour and a quarter. To be honest, if I'd known that, I would have come myself to speak on it. But I assumed the panel would give it full consideration. I wonder if the chairman could tell us whether she feels the panel did give it full consideration.
Thank you, councillor Davies. Councillor Mrs Bayford, would you like to speak?
Thank you, madam mayor. Yes, I would like to confirm that everyone was given a chance to speak. They all engaged on each subject. We listened very carefully to what councillor Martin said, the executive member. I find everybody on that panel engages really well and we covered every single aspect. And I think all the panel were happy at the end that we completed at that time. It was not rushed, I can assure you of that.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Bayford. Councillor Bastable? You would like to speak?
Thank you, madam mayor. Yes, through you, madam mayor. I'd like to ask, I noticed that on page ninety-three of the minutes of the, of the meeting, that the council's focusing on determining its current carbon emissions profile and it's working towards its net zero target.[1789.57] Following the Chancellor of the Exchequer's announcement of fifty million pounds of funding for local authorities to reduce their carbon policies, and given the fact that our boiler is nearing the end of its useful life, I wonder if we could ask the officers to investigate the possibilities of us bidding for some of this funding in order to find a more carbon neutral solution for the replacement of our ailing boiler?
councillor Mrs Bayford?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the council is fully committed to reducing its carbon footprint, and will be looking at all options in relation to this matter. Officers will be asked to provide the most appropriate boiler with regard to carbon emissions. This matter will be referred to the council's climate change working group, which will examine funding streams necessary to provide assistance in delivering a low carbon solution. I'd like to thank councillor Bastall for raising this important matter.
Thank you councillor Mrs Bayford, councillor Forrest, do you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On item seven, climate change update, this is starting to sound just because I just heard from councillor Bastall, and I'm requiring about the question he raised at the meeting. I know that it's required, although the council could strengthen the requirements to develop more carbon efficient homes through the draft local plan. And councillor Martin agreed to take my suggestion back, given what the leader told us, where you're wrong, the timetable of consideration of local plan. Has that suggestion been passed forward? And has it been considered as part of the planning team looking at the draft plan?
councillor Mrs Bayford, did you want to come back?
Come back. No, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm sure councillor Martin's taken.
Thank you. councillor Price?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, mine is on page ninety-two, item six. I understand that the finances are to be reviewed in September due to the Covid nineteen effect upon all of our finances. Therefore, can the chairman advise me whether there's going to be an exercise to revalue all of our commercial portfolio? Because it appears to be considerable effect upon property values that are in the press at the moment.
councillor Mrs Bayford?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I think perhaps we should have a written answer to this one, because I'm not completely sure what the current situation is, but perhaps we could have a written answer from one of the officers about this matter.
Madam Mayor, if I could just let you know councillor Mrs Trot is indicating that she wishes to speak when you're ready.
Madam Mayor, in answer, in response to what the chairman's going to say, could that be circulated to all Members, not just to myself?
That would be very helpful, I'm sure to everyone, thank you. councillor Mrs Trot?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have prepared a question asking about the possible delay to the submission of the work of the, the climate change working group. And I'd just like to check with councillor Martin through you, Madam Mayor, that you said the report's now coming to the meeting of the twelfth of October executive, and that will be brought forward to the scrutiny panel in late September. Am I correcting that through you, Madam Mayor, to councillor Martin?
Mrs Bayford, are you happy that councillor Martin answers?
Yes, I am, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Martin?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, I did indeed say that, that the intention for the carbon calculation report to go to the twelfth of October executive meeting, and it will be going to a policy resources pre-scrutiny meeting in September.
councillor Mrs Trot, do you want to come back?
Yes, please, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. On page ninety-three, onto the first paragraph, and it says, the Members' newsletter will include updates on the progress of the climate change working group, and this will be added to the terms of reference. It is now some months, some weeks, since we've had a Members' newsletter. We have had excellent updates from the chief executive, but I'm wondering when that situation will get up, so the situation getting updates on this is likely to be promulgated to us, please, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I may be able to help with that.
Thank you very much indeed, thank you.
Sorry to jump in, Members.
No, no, that's absolutely fine.
But yes, the Members' newsletter, I actually do have a meeting scheduled with the officer who is helping the climate change working group, so that is one of the things that we need to discuss. Obviously, as you'll appreciate, we haven't all been together, but we will be having a Teams meeting, so it's very much on our list of things to, to address.
Thank you, councillor Martin. Thank you very much. councillor Martin, you wish to come back in?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to reiterate what I said at the start on the, on my statement on climate change, that despite the lockdown, we have confirmed, fully confirmed that progress has continued on the carbon footprint calculation. However, there have been a number of other things in relation to climate change that we haven't been able to do because of the pandemic lockdown. So the priority is to get the calculation agreed, finalized, get that approved, so we know exactly where we are. There will be other things that, that will start to come through, and the, that the issue of climate change, the Members' newsletter, hasn't come through mainly because of all the other priorities that we've had to do as a council. But we haven't forgotten it, and we will be working on it, and we will be keeping everybody informed.
Thank you councillor Martin, councillor Woodward, did you want to come in?
No, 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 thank you, Madam Mayor.
councillor Mrs Trot? Is it a supplementary now?
No, it's just, it's a point of order, I just wanted to make it clear that I wasn't criticizing anybody, it was just an inquiry, and thank you, Lee has answered.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you. But thank you councillor Mrs Trot, thank you. Members, if there's no one else wishing to speak, I will now take these minutes as agreed. We now go on to councillor Mrs Mandrie, would you please present the minutes of the housing scrutiny panel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and please do quote, sorry, the minutes of the housing scrutiny board panel held on the twentieth of March, two thousand and twenty.
Do you have a second?
Seconded, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Dugan. Members, are, any Members wishing to speak here? councillor Mrs Trot?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On page one hundred, it was noted that the night of eight, that the motion that I had put forward, asking that a letter be sent to the chairman of the secretary of state for housing communities and local government, I would like to say thank you to councillor Mrs Mandrie, she sent me a copy of that letter. Have we actually had a response to that, councillor Mrs Mandrie, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the letter was sent on the seventeenth of March, we did not receive any response. I spoke to the officer, and it was resent on the ninth of July.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? councillor Mrs Trot?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now that if we have the page one hundred and one, item ten, she, the head of housing and benefits gave us a very good presentation about the update on funding for tackling the issue of rough sleepers. And I did have a very good response from the head of housing to a series of questions that I put relating to the allocation of funds received to tackle the issue of rough sleepers. And I'm sure that the chairman is aware that on Saturday the eighteenth of July, the housing secretary, Robert Jenricks, launched the next steps accommodation programme. And it says, moving forward, the pandemic has given us the opportunity to now engage positively with those previously not wishing to do so, and work towards finding suitable and sustainable homes for them. And there is an option, which I'm sure our excellent housing team is already looking at, for us to bid money to do this. Through you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask if councillor Mrs Mandrie is aware of what, of that, whether we're already working on it, I wouldn't be surprised if we were.
councillor Mrs Mandrie? Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not exactly fully aware, obviously, I've been looking at what has been going on over the last two or three months. And with the Covid, we're talking about the neighbourhood teams working hard, stressing the rise of, sorry, it's on. Sorry, 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 sorry. We have some, well, let me leave it at that, because obviously I've got the, the update on the July, but I haven't got any more update after that, so if councillor Trot would like me to get a written reply to her, although I think she knows anyway, thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, thank you very much, Mrs Mandrie, it's just up there, the deadline for bidding is August the twentieth, twenty twenty, so I'm sure we will be bidding for money. Thank you very much indeed, and yes, please, a written reply would be very good.
Thank you, as I know, oh councillor Burkett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, it's just to reiterate about the point that councillor Mandrie is making, that the fairham housing team, in particular the head of housing, make it a point to look at the government guidelines and apply for any funding that they can get, and they've been very successful throughout the, throughout the pandemic. So I would expect us to bid for this, but I'm sure councillor Mandrie will cover that in a written reply to you councillor Trot.
Thank you councillor Burkett. Through you, Madam Mayor, but thank you councillor Burkett for that. Thank you very much indeed councillor Mrs Trot, thank you. Members, I don't see any more hands up now, so I will take these minutes as agreed. Item twelve is to answer questions in accordance with standing order seventeen point two. I can confirm one question has been submitted for this meeting, which is being displayed on the screen for you. councillor Martin, are you able to provide a response for the question, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. In response to councillor Price's question, there have been no reports of individuals being injured as a result of lifting or carrying their green waist bag over the last five years. I did make a comment earlier on in my announcement about injuries that have taken place within the workforce, but there has been none in relation, or non-reported in relation to members of the public.
Thank you councillor Martin, councillor Price, do you have any follow-up questions for clarification?
Thank you, Madam Chair, no, I have no further questions. Thank the executive member for the answer, and I think from what he had said earlier on, we're going to go to wheelie bins, that will resolve any problems which you may have had anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Price. Our next item for us to consider is the appointments to committees. councillor Woodward, would you please take this through this report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, item fourteen is the standard report that we deal with every year, and obviously a little bit later this year during to the, due to the pandemic. And the recommendations are before Members in terms of committee allocations, and I think probably the only page I need to direct Members to is appendix B, page one one one, which shows which Members are on which committees and panels, executive members, et cetera, who are the chairman and vice chairman, and propose as per the recommendation. Madam Mayor, on page one hundred and three, running into one hundred and four.
Thank you councillor Woodward. councillor Keeble?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually got these papers over the weekend, and having gone through them, if we look at appendix A, under the political group balance calculations, we see that on the planning committee, the Conservatives have six point three nine, which is rounded down to six. The Liberal Democrats have one point one six, which is roundy down to one, and we have one point four five, which is rounded down to one. So the Conservatives, looking at all the other ones, they've gone down or gone up. So, but if we actually looked then on appendix B, we see that the Conservatives have got seven, and they've dropped one off the appeals instead of having four. I don't think that's ethical, because if you consider the Liberal Democrats and the independents actually have two point six one, we should actually have three representatives on the planning for democracy, and the Conservatives have the six. And I'm going to propose amendment that the Conservatives lose one on the planning committee, and it goes to independents, and that they can have one on the appeals to make their numbers correct.
Madam Mayor, just before you go to that amendment, can I just confirm that the original proposal has been seconded?
Yes, I was just coming to that, yes.
Sorry, thank you.
councillor Cartwright, are you seconding that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I did have my hand up, so happy to second.
Thank you very much indeed, thank you. Okay, back to you, Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so just to confirm, so councillor Keeble's amendment, sorry councillor Keeble, I was just, just to double check what you're saying there. So you believe there should be an amendment to reduce the Conservative allocation to six on the planning committee? And that extra seat goes to the independent group, that was your?
That's correct. And then we, the Conservatives can go back up to have their four on appeals, which they're down for on appendix A, and we will lose one on appeal.
Okay, so again, Madam Mayor, just to confirm, so that amendment is to swap the numbers. If I can just be clear, what it is we're actually looking at? In the report, on page one hundred and three, the recommendations are actually split out A, B, C, D, and then over to the page to E. So this is to amend, just going to make sure I'm getting the right one, B, which is the allocation of seats to political groups, that's the bit that we're looking at the amendment for now. And councillor Keeble, we just need to confirm if that amendment has been seconded.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that. Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much indeed councillor Cunningham, thank you.
So Madam Mayor, that would, that would go to, that can now go into debate as that amendment has been properly put. I'm happy to provide a background to this if anybody wishes it, but I'll let Members speak first, obviously.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Engelfield, I believe he would like to speak. councillor Engelfield? You need to unmute.
Yes, sorry, Madam Mayor.
I didn't agree with it.
Like never, I guess, but yeah, sorry, I was going to second the motion, that was all.
Oh, you don't want to speak?
No, no, well, I need to support the motion, that was all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? In that case, Lee, I'll hand it over to you if you would like to give some clarification on this one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so as I have indicated, what we are looking at is an amendment which effectively is at item B, and that would be to amend the numbers that have been allocated. So obviously, I did have a conversation with councillor Keeble to confirm this prior to the meeting. So he has raised an amendment about the numbers, that then goes to the vote, as no other Members wishing, wish to speak, sorry, I get my teeth back in. So Members, you are now going to be asked if you wish to vote for, against, or abstain from the amendment as put by councillor Keeble, which is to drop the Conservative allocation on planning committee to six and increase to two for the independent group. Before you continue.
I do wish to speak.
I'm sorry.
I was just coming to you, I was just trying to stop Ruth from speaking, councillor Woodward.
Good luck with that, Madam Mayor. Yeah, thank you, I will speak on this one, Madam Mayor, councillor Keeble seems to be getting rather excited about the fact that, despite the fact that his new political party is entitled to zero point eight one of a seat on the appeals panel, which is to jettison that in favour of a panel for which he would only have an entitlement of one point four five. And I think it has always been our custom and practice as a council, and where possible, we like to have all political groups represented on all panels. So I would obviously hate to see councillor Keeble's new political party, new political force in fairham losing entirely its representation on one of our panels. So I think that would not be appropriate, and I also find it interesting councillor Keeble wanting to add up the Liberal entitlement plus the new independent political party entitlement. Unless, of course, he's planning on joining next the Liberal group with his comrades in arms, then I think that that calculation is irrelevant. So I propose, Madam Mayor, that the, or I ask the council to vote against this amendment, because it is important that all groups are on all panels and committees, whether they like those panels and committees or not. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Woodward, councillor Keeble?
Yeah.
Can you, can you unmute yourself councillor Keeble?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can.
Well, councillor Woodward, you say it would be terrible if we weren't represented on appeals. We actually have two places on appeals, and we seem to have given one, so therefore I would just say by losing one, we would still have representative on appeals panel, so I'm afraid councillor Woodward, you're incorrect.
councillor Forrest?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In perspective of what comes to councillor Keeble, as just said, I think the important issue here is to have as much diversity as possible within the, the planning committee, which is the function of which the residents take most, most interested. And I would want to see all of us viewed represented. And I can just assure anyone who's worried about it, there are no small problems with those being done between the Liberals and anyone else, it's just a simple matter, matter of equity and diversity.
Thank you councillor Forrest. Lee, I think I have no one else wishing to, or having their hands up to speak, so would you like to take over again?
With pleasure, Madam Mayor. So Members, we're going to vote on the amendment put forward by councillor Keeble, as I have previously outlined. So Members, again, I'll go through by roll call, and we'll do this in order, so councillor Barton?
For.
councillor Bastall?
Against.
councillor Mrs Bayford?
Bayford, against.
councillor Miss Bell?
Against.
councillor Burkett?
Against.
councillor Butts?
Against.
councillor Cartwright?
Against.
councillor Mrs Hockley?
Against.
councillor Cunningham? councillor Peter Davis?
Against.
councillor Tom Davis?
Against.
councillor Dugan?
Against.
councillor Mrs Ellis?
Against.
councillor Engelfield?
For.
councillor Evans?
Against.
councillor Ford?
Against.
councillor Forrest?
For.
councillor Miss Harper?
Against.
councillor Mrs Hennigan?
For.
councillor Mrs Hockley?
Against.
councillor Keeble?
For.
councillor Kelly?
For.
councillor Mrs Mandrie?
Against.
councillor Martin?
Against.
councillor Mrs Bankhurst?
Against.
councillor Price?
Councillor Price?
For.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I just very quickly hit the mute all button. Sorry, Madam Mayor, I just very quickly hit the mute all button, just to let that clock continue. So I was up to councillor Price and now councillor Mrs Trott, please. So you may need to unmute. Thank you. Councillor Walker?
Against.
And councillor Woodward?
Against.
Councillor Physically left the meeting after the item on the motion, just to confirm to members. Madam Mayor, that's nine votes in favour and 20 against, so the amendment has fallen.
Thank you very much indeed, Lee. Thank you. Did anyone else want to speak on the motion at all, on the allocation? No? Well, then we will have to go through the recommendations, Lee. Shall I contact you again?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Do those on the other ones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes. So, members, as you can see on page 111 and 112, that is an amalgamation of all of the nominations. So those appendices reflect the recommendations at A, B, C, and D. So if you're happy, Madam Mayor, we can take a vote on that as one block. I would point out to members that this also includes a recommendation at E, which gives the group leaders the ability to swap individual councillors amongst the allocations in the event of an individual councillor suffers from the Covid pandemic issue. So that just gives the group leaders a little bit of flexibility in order to keep our committees running. So if you're happy, Madam Mayor, I'll run through the roll call for that vote. Please do, Lee. Thank you very much. Okay, members, so one more time, this is to vote on the agreeing what's set out in appendix B, as I say, on page 112 and 111. So councillor Barton?
For.
Councillor Bastable?
For.
Councillor Mrs Bayford?
Against.
Councillor Miss Bell?
Against.
For. Councillor Burkett?
Against.
For.
Councillor Butts?
For.
Councillor Cartwright?
Against.
For.
Councillor Mrs Clubley?
Against.
Councillor Cunningham?
Against.
Against.
Councillor Peter Davis?
For.
Councillor Tom Davis?
For.
Councillor Dugan?
For.
Councillor Mrs Ellis?
For.
Councillor Engelfield?
Abstain.
Councillor Evans? Councillor Ford?
For.
Madam Mayor, I've just received a message from councillor Forrest that he's lost his wifi connection. I'm just going to pause and check to see if he has, okay, if he is connected, and he is not. So unfortunately, we're not going to be able to take a vote from him on this item. Councillor Miss Harper?
For.
Councillor Mrs Henigan?
Against.
Councillor Mrs Hockley?
For.
Councillor Keeble?
Against.
Councillor Kelly?
For.
Councillor Mrs Mandrie?
Against. Sorry, for, for, sorry.
Just to confirm, councillor Mrs Mandrie, you're voting?
For.
For, thank you. Councillor Martin?
For.
Councillor Mrs Pankhurst?
For.
Councillor Price?
For.
Councillor Mrs Trott? Councillor Mrs Trott?
For, because it's so important that item E is passed. So as we're doing it all in one. Thank you, councillor Mrs Trott. Councillor Walker? Councillor Walker? I can see his picture.
For.
Thank you.
And councillor Woodward?
For.
Madam Mayor, councillor Forrest had his hands up a minute ago. I don't know if he's come back.
Councillor Forrest, are you there?
I am here.
Thank you. Are you voting on this? Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I came back into communication halfway through the vote.
Thank you.
So I haven't heard the original proposition.
Ah, okay. If you were not part, if you were not in the room, as it were, as part of the debate, then we wouldn't be able to take a vote from you on this item, I'm afraid.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's 24 votes in favour, Madam Mayor, three against, and one abstention.
Thank you very much indeed, Lee. Thank you for that. Members, we come to the last item this evening, which is item 15, is the appointment of outside bodies. And I'm going to go back to councillor Woodward again and ask him to take us through the appointments.
Yes, thank you very much indeed, Madam Mayor. So we have six, seven appointments here to make. And I would like to put forward these names. Obviously, I'll go slowly in case anyone wants to suggest anything else. So the first one, Citizens Advice Fairham, which is to appoint a deputy representative. And my proposal is councillor Sarah Pankhurst. The second one is the Community Safety Partnership, which I proposed councillor Ian Bastable. And the third one, Fairham Welfare Trust, I proposed councillor Fred Burkett. And number four, the Police and Crime Panel Deputy Representative, councillor Ian Bastable. And number five, the Hampshire County Council South Area Road Safety Council, that is councillor Ian Bastable. I'll just do the two others, but I do notice that Roger Price has his hand up. Number five, the, I've just done number six, the Porton City Council Health Overview and Scrutiny Panel, councillor Ian Bastable. And finally, the Moving On Project, councillor Sarah Pankhurst.
Thank you, councillor Woodward. Councillor Price?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have, I want to propose councillor Kelly for item five. Councillor Kelly again for item six, and councillor Katrina Trott for item seven. And regarding item seven, I think that I'd like to make a comment is that the Moving On Project is based in the Experian Youth Centre, which is in Fairham East, which is councillor Trott's ward, and she has had closely agents with that organisation for some time. And I think it would be an important thing to appoint her on to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Price. Thank you. Lee, how's it going to be a vote? Would you like me to?
Madam, yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. But can I just confirm, yes, I was just going to say, we need to just confirm a second for the original proposal by councillor Woodward.
Do we have a second, Ed?
I did have my hand up again, so I'm happy to have him to second the proposal.
I do apologize, councillor Cartwright. It's very difficult, keep finding all these little hands. Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Forrest, you would like to come in, I believe.
Yes, I'd like to second the three propositions put forward by council.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you for your help. That's very kind. Actually, I think we can go back to you now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, members, what we're going to do now is vote on that proposal, camp proposal by councillor Price. If you're happy, members, we'll take those three suggested amendments on block. Unless anybody puts their hand up now, I would suggest that's probably the best way to do it. So this is voting on the amendment raised by councillor Price, which is to propose councillor Kelly for item five, councillor Kelly for item six, and councillor Mrs Trott for item seven. Sorry, I will pause, Madam Mayor, because councillor Price has his hand up. Councillor Price?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very happy to actually take items five and six as one vote. But I would like to actually have a separate vote on item seven, because I think that it is important when it's in some of this ward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Price.
Okay, very well, Madam Mayor. So we will vote then on items five and six, the amendment being councillor Kelly. Councillor Woodward has his hand up. I will pause. Councillor Woodward?
Thank you. Just a little bit of clarification on councillor Roger Price's point, if I may. We do have a custom and practice with this administration, if an organisation is based in and solely active within a particular ward, then we do, I think almost without fail, put on one of the local ward councillors. But I would draw members' attention to the fact that the Moving On Project is active in right across Fairham and Gosport. So I don't believe it's relevant where it is based, because this does actually cover actually two boroughs. So I think that's a little bit different from what is our custom and practice, where we choose people from community associations which are active solely within a ward. So I'm just add that clarification to what is happening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Woodward. Right, back to you, Lee.
Did you want me to continue, Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Right, members, so this is the first amendment for five and six being councillor Kelly in place. So again, we'll run through it very quickly here. So councillor Barton?
For.
Councillor Bastable?
Against.
Councillor Mrs Bayford?
Against. Against.
Councillor Miss Bell?
Against.
Councillor Burkett?
Against.
Councillor Butts?
Against.
Councillor Cartwright?
Against.
Councillor Mrs Clubley?
Against.
Councillor Cunningham?
Abstain.
Councillor Peter Davis?
Against.
Councillor Tom Davis?
Against.
Councillor Dugan?
Against.
Councillor Mrs Ellis?
Against.
Councillor Engelfield? Councillor Engelfield, are you able to?
Sorry, abstain.
Abstain, thank you very much. Councillor Evans?
Against.
Councillor Ford?
Against.
Councillor Forrest?
For.
Councillor Miss Harper?
Against.
Councillor Mrs Henigan?
Abstain.
Councillor Mrs Hockley?
I think she's left the meeting.
That's what her message says.
She sent a message that she's left the meeting.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Councillor Keeble?
For.
Councillor Kelly?
For.
Councillor Mrs Mandrie?
Against.
Councillor Martin?
Against.
Councillor Mrs Pankhurst?
Against.
Councillor Price?
For.
Councillor Mrs Trott?
For.
Councillor Walker?
Councillor Walker.
Against.
And councillor Woodward?
Against.
Thank you. Sorry, it stops me from counting when that noise is happening, you see. Madam Mayor, that's six votes against, 19 in, so I beg your pardon, Madam Mayor, let me start again. Six votes in favour, 19 votes against, and three abstentions. So the amendment has fallen on that item. So, Madam Mayor, now we move on to the final amendment, which is on the Moving On Project for councillor Trott to be appointed to that one. So again, members, councillor Barton?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Bastable?
Against.
Councillor Mrs Bayford?
Against.
Councillor Miss Bell?
Against.
Councillor Burkett?
Against.
Councillor Butts?
Against.
Councillor Cartwright?
Against.
Councillor Mrs Clubley?
Against.
Councillor Cunningham?
For.
Councillor Peter Davis?
Against.
Councillor Tom Davis?
Against.
Councillor Dugan?
Against.
Councillor Mrs Ellis?
Against.
Councillor Engelfield?
For.
Councillor Evans?
Against.
Councillor Ford?
Against.
Councillor Forrest?
For.
Councillor Miss Harper?
Against.
Councillor Mrs Henigan?
For.
Councillor Mrs Hockley?
Left the meeting.
I'm terribly sorry. Councillor Keeble?
For.
Councillor Kelly?
For.
Councillor Mrs Mandrie?
Against.
Councillor Martin?
Against.
Councillor Mrs Pankhurst?
Against.
Councillor Price?
For.
Councillor Mrs Trott?
For.
Councillor Walker?
Against.
Councillor Woodward?
Against.
Madam Mayor, that's nine votes for and 19 against, so that amendment has also failed.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, can I suggest that, given that the amendments have fallen, we would ordinarily go back to vote on the substantive, but as that has fallen, unless any members object, we would take that motion as passed, as recommended by councillor Woodward.
Thank you. All the outside bodies are as paper.
Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Does that read, members? Thank you. Members, that does bring us to the end of our meeting. But before I finish, can I thank you all very much indeed for your patience this evening. It was a first for all of us, and I hope you agree that I think it went quite well. We had quite a long agenda here to discuss. And I hope that I gave everybody sufficient time to come back. Stick learning curve for some, I do know, but thank you again very much indeed for your job and diligence. But can I please, before I switch off, just remind you that there is a short delay between the meeting ending and the recording ending. So if you've just took breaks, don't start doing any silly things until you know that we actually care. Thank you very much indeed. Have a good evening. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will confirm in a moment when it is not broadcasting.
Thank you, Lee.